All right. Good evening. It is 6:02 on April 27th, and we are going to call this meeting of the school committee of Lynchon in to order. And we begin all of our meetings with the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have an obligation to check with the folks in attendance to see if anyone other than the town is recording tonight's meeting. Is anyone doing an audio or visual recording this evening? Not seeing any, that's wonderful. And that brings us to our public comment section. This is where anyone who is in attendance is welcome to address the school committee. We will review quickly some of the rules that are associated with that public comment. Anyone can address the school committee and is welcome to do so up to two times. We are also welcome to make comments on anything that is on the school committee's agenda. If anyone doesn't have an agenda or hasn't seen one yet, we can just put your hand up and we can certainly pass one around to make sure that you know what is on the agenda. Those comments are made only on those items. We cannot stray off of the items that are on the agenda. Additionally, the comments will, we will ask you to please limit them to three minutes. The chair does have the prerogative to stop public comment at any time or to ask an individual to cease their comments so that someone else can speak. And anyone is welcome to speak up to two times. So certainly if you'd like to speak more than once, that's absolutely your choice to do so. And so we will begin with public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment.
Yep.
Yes, please come up to.
Thank you. All right. My name is Alexa Lassard. I am a parent of sixth grader Austin Lassard. Cognitive efficiency was relative weakness and significantly lower than predicted. Inductive reasoning was limited knowledge. Fluid reasoning is limited knowledge. Short-term working is limited processing. Speed will find it difficult to succeed. Number facility, very difficult to succeed. Perpetual speed will find it very difficult to succeed. Cognitive efficiency, very difficult to succeed at age level tasks. Number series, very difficult to succeed. Letter pattern, matching difficult to succeed. Numbers reversed, difficult to succeed. Number pattern difficulty, difficult to succeed. Hair cancellation, difficult to succeed. Recommended accommodations, extended time for assignments and breaks during larger assignments. Austin's scores are problematic to score because they are significantly different, making it problematic to interpret Austin's composite score. This was just part of my child's evaluation. Reading these results and hearing how many areas my child will find out hard to succeed in, and then seeing that his results vary so much that they are inconclusive and no further testing was recommended, and that none of the accommodations that were recommended were implemented. Accommodations that were recommended didn't even match the needs of evaluations uncovered. At the end of this IEP meeting, your director of people services looked at me and told me not to worry because he has spell check, and I am blessed that my child's only problem is that he cannot spell. The academic testing didn't fully evaluate his writing ability. I am surprised that the director of people services didn't recognize this. My child's spelling is so bad that when texting, it doesn't even auto correct for him, and he can't even text conversations with his friends because they can't read what he is trying to say. He struggles to write letters and struggles to complete written assignments. But that I should be blessed that I am up until 1:00 a.m. with my child regularly trying to complete assignments with him to help him stay on top of his work because he can't get the appropriate accommodations in this school. On April 7th, 2022, I emailed the superintendent directly stating what was said to me by the director of people services. No response. Logged nine phone calls of voicemails left for the superintendent, no response. Eleven CC emails to the superintendent, no response. On April 15th, 2002, I emailed the school committee, all of you. Not one response from any of you besides Karen Cass. I provide these dates so you can go back in your email and read the full experience of what happened during my son's evaluation, from my age being questioned to his evaluator's questioning the director of people services recommendations. During the entire process, the director of people services was not in compliance with the state timelines that are all laid out in an email that was sent to every single one of you, including the superintendent. I did what I was supposed to do. I followed the chain of command. I reached out to all the resources to help me, and nobody helped. Let's fast forward to this year. I now have an advocate attorney, and we had the best principal you will have ever come across, Jess Vazina. I had questions about my child's grades. Boom, immediate response. And I know that is not the norm, especially in this district, clearly.
Excuse me, Ms. Lassard. I'm so sorry to interrupt you. You are at your time, and I'm having a hard time connecting your comments to anything that's on our agenda. Are you familiar with our agenda?
No.
Okay. Would you like us to provide you one?
No, but if my time had to speak again and finish my speech.
We're going to give others the opportunity to speak, and you absolutely have another opportunity to speak, yes.
Does anybody here want to speak before she finishes hers? You're on deck, go ahead, Alexa.
But that is the point.
Ms. Lassard, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Would anyone like to address the school committee as part of a public comment?
I think everybody here wants to address the school committee as public comment. The problem is, is that nobody actually wants to hear what everybody has to say. I know that you and I have spoken, and I know that you have received emails, but everybody at this table should hear what everybody has to say today. And if you need to relate it to an agenda item, it can 100% be related to the reorganization of Lynchon Public.
And what if you filed a time compliance with the state? So why am I being put on a time?
Valid point.
Ms. Keddie, I'm going to ask you to please only address the school committee when it's her turn, okay?
Okay.
Ms. Lassard, no one else would like to address, go right ahead.
I had questions about my child's grades. Boom, immediate response. And I know that is not the norm, especially in this district, clearly. But that is the point. She is a hidden gem in this district, and you all lost her. I understand you do not have control over principals, but you do have the control over the superintendent who is making these awful decisions. The only useful person in this district, the whole entire district, to parents and students, is now on leave. This start of the school year, I finally felt heard, and I felt like my child was starting to get the support he needed, and I felt comfortable sending my child to school. I felt the communication was there, the follow-up was there, the structure was there, which was nowhere to be found at Toy Town, and now that is gone, besides the sixth grade teachers who have been nothing but amazing. I had a phone call with the superintendent last Monday, 4:24. After one whole year, I finally heard back. I asked who my point of contact is at the middle school level for me, and he had no answer. I asked if I had concerns, who I should go to. He stated himself, and that is not an acceptable answer as I have been trying to contact him for over a year. And I will happily provide my call log or emails to any of you that wish to see them as my attorney has generously organized for anyone that would like to see. The superintendent stated he also does not look at emails that he has CC'd on. For any parents that are currently here, don't waste your time CCing him. As he stated, he does not read them. My child is a good kid. Due to the Summit program Jess Vazina has used, he is making good grades. He has never been a trouble a day in his life at school. And maybe that's why the director of people services does not take my request seriously. I honestly do not know. What I do know is that I reached out to all of you, the principal of Toy Town, the superintendent last year, and got zero help in this district. I now have an attorney and advocate and plan fully on making sure my child is provided the appropriate accommodations he needs and have zero issues of pursuing a lawsuit that is already in place for everything that was stated in the email to all of you on April 15th and to the superintendent on April 7th. This district failed my child last year, and you all as a whole failed all of the students this year by not doing your due diligence with supervising and following up with your superintendent. I am a single mom of three kids, and I have missed countless hours of work this week setting up meetings with my advocate to try and help my child be successful. If someone in this district could do their job, it would much be appreciated because I have done mine as a parent and taken all the appropriate steps to help my child. Now it's your turn.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the school committee?
Go ahead. I'll go last.
You'll go last.
So my name is Kaylinine. I have three sons. One is school-choiced out, a school-choiced out by second, and I'm working on my third. My son, Michael, last year got taken off of his IEP because he was needing standards. Yet this year, he is failing in every subject. He needs help in English, he needs help in math, and they want to put him back on an IEP. And the same special ed teacher that took him off his IEP is going to be the same teacher that is going to be reassessing him on a new IEP. How ridiculous is this? And when I asked for a different teacher to do the testing, I was told there's no other teacher in the special ed department that can do it. Who wants the same teacher that dismissed an IEP to run the same test on my child? The same test that I already had done last year by the special ed director because I wanted my child held back last year. And the principal and the dean of students, Flado, told me, no, he could not stay back because they're going to get him extra help this year. They're going to get him up to meeting standards. He's now in fifth grade, and he's still not a fourth grade benchmark. So my child is now behind, hates going to school, doesn't have any friends because they call him stupid because he can't answer questions in his class or read aloud. I seeked out the help. I had him tested through the school, and through the school, they requested that he stay back. And Ms. Diaz said, no. Nope, not going to do it. He's going to get the extra help. Where's his help now? Failing? You know what she said? We'll get him help next year. We'll get him up to fifth grade next year when he's in sixth grade. My child is always going to be behind and playing catch-up, and a school system doesn't care. Parents should not have to beg for their kid's testing. I reached out to my doctor. There is an 18-month wait to get the same testing done through the state. 18 months. My child will be school-choiced out again next year. So while you revamp your school, more people are pulling their kids out because we can't deal with this school system anymore. You're not helping our kids. Focus on their damn educations. Not your stupid agendas.
Thank you very much. I'll take a moment before I call for the next speaker to remind everyone that we do have to associate our comments with an item on our agenda.
We're all here to talk about the same thing.
Reorganization falls under that.
The chair makes that determination. And certainly, anything having to do with reorganization, moving of classrooms, anything like that, we very much welcome your comments and anything else that we have tonight. But special education and, excuse me, personnel matters are not on our agenda this evening.
Then I guess we just go to Dussie because there's no one here that wants to listen to any of us.
Well, there's already 20 cases out in Dussie, so.
Over 20.
Well, who are we supposed to talk to? We can't talk to the superintendent, we can't talk to the principal. Who do we talk to?
Would anyone else like to make any public comment?
I think.
I have something.
Coach Charles?
Good evening. My name is Chelsea, and I'm a mom of a sixth grader and a fifth grader enrolled here in Lynchon. I know this committee can not help with everything we have going on through the last few years, but I feel as though you need to hear some of it to get an idea of how frustrating the lack of communication is between parents and the administration. My sixth grader is doing incredible at the middle school. He loves being there, learning, and being part of the track team. But he has loved it so much because of the principal at the middle school. She has encouraged him, helped him through some struggles at school, and cheered him on at track meets. She is a true superhero to these children. She not only knows everyone's names, but she actually cares about the kids. She never makes us parents feel like she is telling us what we want to hear. She just tells us the truth, even if it is hard to hear. But that makes us only respect her even more. My fifth grader is another story altogether. He was diagnosed with ADHD, depression, and anxiety when he was eight years old. He has been seeing a therapist and a psychiatrist and has been medicated since the diagnosis. He is now being denied an IEP three times because academically he is doing great. But our issue is socially and emotionally he is struggling. On his last IEP evaluation, he was at risk for every single thing socially and emotionally. It even says on the evaluation that I should have him tested for severe depression, ADHD, and autism. The director of people services looked right at me and said, if he was diagnosed with anything, he would qualify for an IEP. But because he is not diagnosed, he does not qualify at this time. When I told her that he was in fact diagnosed with three things and I emailed them all the paperwork from his psychiatrist, therapist, and doctor, I was told, well, unfortunately, at this time, he still does not qualify. Anytime we have a meeting with the director of people services, she makes me feel like I am beneath her and not worth her time. I feel as though she judges me based on my age and my appearance. What I look like and how old I am should never impact my child's learning, and he should never be denied the support he obviously needs based on my looks and age. Over the last four years, we've been dealing with my child being severely bullied, struggling to make friends, and just being an awkward kid. We would not change anything about him, but we are also not going to sit here and say our child is perfect and that's no wrong. After four years of bullying, he's now the bully. His therapist believes he is starting to bully other kids because he is trying to be proactive in preventing being bullied first. I had talked to the middle school principal about my fifth grader, and I honestly was not worried about him anymore because of her. She was not going to let him fail. He was going to be safe at the middle school. We had a plan for him. We were going to have a transitional meeting. With her absence, my child is going to fail in middle school. The middle school principal, the first person to actually care about him in this school district and not just see him as a bad kid, is heavily missed, and we are uncertain of why she is not at school. There is no support at our school other than her. There is no help for the kids like my child who does not fit into the box the school wants these kids to fit in. The bus has been a major issue for my son. This is where most of him bullying others and him being bullied occurs. I had to buy him noise-canceling headphones to help drown out the noise. Staff at Toy Town knew my child struggled on the bus, and I have received complaints of my child's behavior more than a few times. But every time the principal says she talks to him, and we work at home on how to behave on the bus, not once were we given any type of warning that he would be kicked off the bus or anything. The principal of Toy Town told me she would never kick him off knowing his struggles, that she knows he's struggling, and the bus is a huge issue for him. On March 29th, I received a call from the dean of students at Toy Town. There was an incident on the bus, and the principal had made the decision to kick my child off the bus for the rest of the school year and that I needed to get him to and from school from now on. As a working mom who works from 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 and his dad works from 5:30 to 4:30 every day, it was not possible.
Ms. Harris, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. You are at your time.
Does anybody else want to talk?
Would anyone else like to address the school?
I would like you to finish. Can we all say?
Thank you. For the first time ever, I fought back against school, and I am ashamed it took me so long. I was finally able to get him on a ban, and not once did any of the staff offer a ban as an option. I had to fight for that. But would you like to know what our superintendent had to say about this? Absolutely nothing. No emails were returned, no phone calls were returned. He does not care the way the staff treats parents or the struggles these childrens are going through. Over the last few years, I have added our superintendent's my emails with concerns regarding my son. Not once has he returned any. This year, my child is struggling not only socially and emotionally, but academically now. He tells me he feels stupid because he does not understand the material he is being taught. Because he obviously needs an IEP, and the school continues to deny him, I am paying $5,200 out of pocket for a neuro site. At our first consult appointment with a psychologist, we were told our child will most likely come back with an autism diagnosis. So a diagnosis of ADHD, depression, anxiety, and possibly autism, but how does he not qualify for an IEP? Numerous complaints about how the director of people services handles these situations have been sent to our superintendent, but he does not reply to the parents. The decisions he is making recently will only hurt our district. I do not think this committee or the superintendents realize how disastrous it is for our community to have the middle school principal not in attendance. We are finally at the point where we have to hire an advocate and an attorney and are planning on filing a lawsuit. Due to the middle school principal's absence, the school not offering the support our child needs and the lack of communication from our superintendent, we are unsure if our children will be returning to school next year.
Thank you. There's obviously a lot of passion in the room, and so we're certainly taking some liberties with the definition or the items that are related to the topics we can discuss tonight. We're obviously offering a lot of latitude to allow messages to be heard. And so with that, others that would like to address the school committee?
Matt, you want to talk first?
You've got it, Matt.
You got this, girlfriend.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, my name is Kat Bierola, and I'm vice president of the middle school.
You're okay. Take a breath.
You're great, you're good. All good. Just talking.
Just talking, right? Yeah.
Great, he's friendlier.
You're all right.
Honestly, ever since Ms. Vazina's left, the school has just gone downhill and it's just not the same anymore. Teachers are just leaving, and I know that the high school principal will do her best to take care of both grades, but she just, we need, she just can't just do it all by herself. And Ms. Vazina has helped all these students, and I hear people all the time asking to like email her and that she just can't respond, and that it's just because of medical leave. It just hurts to see other, all of my friends struggle and all of the people in Ms. Gilbo's class struggle just because she's out. I've never, I've been to multiple schools due to different things, and I've never had a principal as amazing as her, and I wouldn't have asked for a better one.
You got this. You do. I promise you, you got it.
She's taught us how to be leaders, how to be kind, and just overall a good person. She's helped me through so much. It is all of us as a school and as a community, she's inspired so many people. We just need her back. It's just not the same anymore. It doesn't feel how school should feel. It doesn't.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, honey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Can I just make one quick comment? I just wanted to let you know that the courage that you have to come up here to speak to us tonight didn't come from Ms. Vazina or anyone else, but from within yourself. And I wanted to thank you for coming forward to speak to us.
Well done. Well done. Thank you. Others?
Is there anyone else?
I'll go last, so don't worry about it. Mine's more fiscal than what you have got.
Yeah. Okay. I will probably take longer than three minutes, so can I just request to have six that was back here? You know? But I did review the agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would like to talk about district organization. My speech is a little bit different than what you've heard so far, so I think we can loop it in somehow. Over the last year and a half, we have seen and heard more and more firsthand accounts from families about our own school district and the breakdown within the special education department. There have been multiple complaints about violations of our timelines, following students' 504 plans, simply getting them an IEP plan or being denied when evaluations were clear that one was needed. The problems in the department have forced parents to consult with attorneys along with special education advocates. Multiple complaints have been filed with the Department of Education, and some parents have decided to file lawsuits against this district. Parents should not have to fight this hard to get their children in education. It's a public school district, and everyone is entitled to one. I am sure that most of this could have been avoided by simply following timelines, 504 plans, and IEPs, and remaining in compliance. But this is where we currently stand as a community. It's funny because no one ever really takes it seriously when I say this, but there are lawsuits being filed against this district. Lawsuits. I didn't know until recently that you could sue a school district and actually get a compensation. But they can, and they have, this district. There's a history of that. And taxpayers are the ones that are paying that. It always rolls back downhill to taxpayers. So some of you sitting up here don't have kids in our district, but you will continue to pay for the mistakes that this district has made from those lawsuits. And although I understand the school committee does not oversee the school staff, you do oversee the superintendent. So I'd like to address the topic of Jess Vazina, the principal of the middle school. Mrs. Vazina has not been in school since the Fourth of February vacation. I have messaged her as well as every other parent that I can think of at this point, as well as staff, and she has received, no one has received any responses from her. There was no notification to the parents from Mr. King until March 7th stating that she was on personal leave. There is not a single one of us that actually believe that she was on personal leave. She would never take personal leave without speaking to her parents or letting her students know what's going on. It's not who she is, it's not how she's built. And there's been quite a few rumors about her absence that I will not go into tonight. But with Mrs. Vazina's track record and the narrative given to us by Mr. King, something does not fit. That itself is very concerning as a parent. I know that some of you sitting up in front of me tonight have students in the district, and I know that some of you may have grandchildren in this district. How would you feel knowing that the superintendent of your child's school district is not truthful in his communication? The only communication that we have ever received from that king is that our students have never been in any danger. And the rumors circling around town would state that our kids have never been in any danger. But yet, our middle school principal is no longer here. I think that we all know that Mrs. Vazina not being at the school is felt deeply by not only our students, parents, and staff, but this community as a whole. And I don't feel that that is being heard by Mr. King when people are expressing that. So we as parents have also heard that the district administration would like to remove Summit from the middle school for next year. For example, the new school calendar for next year clearly shows that the middle school will be receiving four report cards instead of one at the end of the year. I guess it would be easy to get rid of Summit with Mrs. Vazina, not in the way. And as a parent of a sixth grader, I am very concerned with him heading into, I was very concerned with him heading into middle school. I've heard horrible things about Summit. I attended the school community meetings. I had concerns that Summit was not the right program. But here we are at the end of the year, and I can tell you that a parent of a sixth grader who did not get the reading groups that he needed in fifth grade because that principal told me that it would happen later and that it was because of COVID and that he didn't eat it, is doing excellent in middle school with Summit.
Ms. Keddie, if you don't mind pausing for just a minute.
Three minutes.
Would anyone else like to address the school committee? You're up.
Thanks. The first couple of weeks of the school year, I spent a fair amount of time skeptical about the program. But I also spent a fair amount of time as a parent getting to know Summit and how it worked and how it affected my child. It not only allows that teachers can teach the curriculum as they would do so in a standard setting, but it has taught students the importance for procedure and procedure for taking notes on topics to prepare for tests and projects. It has taught them time management. It has taught them how to study. These are all habits that many students do not develop until high school. In some cases, that's too late. I can feel confident that my child will be better prepared for his next years of education, given how Summit is run and keeps him on track. And given the numerous options nowadays for high school, I know that he will be successful regardless of where he goes because at this rate, it will not be marked off. I am aware of what your job as members of the school committee is, procedure, policy, budget, and oversight of the superintendent. And I'm also aware that some of these topics do not fit within your responsibility. But having said that, we have to ask, then who do we as parents to turn to when our concerns are not being addressed? If our superintendent isn't willing to hear us and take us seriously, then what options do us parents have? Does it not become your job to ensure that the superintendent is doing his job accurately and fairly without nepotism? So I am presenting to you tonight copies of a petition that is circled around this town. Originally, this petition was meant to be presented to you on May 4th, but here we are in an open meeting. It has 254 signatures on it. I'm going to read to you how this petition was presented to anybody in town that chose to sign it. You should know out of those 254 signatures, there's 136 students that signed this. I'll be honest, as a parent, I was not prepared for that. I did not think that my sixth grader would come home I, I did not think that my sixth grader would come home and ask me to sign a petition for his principal back. And that is good leadership. I started this journey, if you will, on a mission to bring back Mrs. Vazina. That's gonna get to me. She is by far one of the best principals in this district and since she has been gone, it's been chaos. And I don't know, I'm not the type of parent that's gonna listen to everything that my kid says when he comes in the door from school, but that school is chaos right now. I've never had my child come home and say, I can't learn anything because there's always an issue going on in school. That's what your sixth graders are saying. Not just mine. That's what they are saying. In that process, I learned that there's a huge breakdown within the special education department in the district. Pretty bad. And although I personally do not deal with that department directly, I do believe that children who need help to be successful deserve to get that help. Parents have started to band together in this town and the truth is starting to come out. There has been over twenty reports filed directly with DESI in the last ten days and I can give you proof of those reports. In addition to that, there has been two lawsuits that have begun against this district. Lawsuits. And the damages that can be awarded in those lawsuits will fall directly back on the taxpayers. We know how difficult it can be to go to town meetings, so I'm asking you to sign this petition to be presented to the school committee on May 4th. They need to know that residents in this town will not stand for more of the same. Our children deserve better. The only agenda that will be tolerated will be getting the districts, the school district back to providing what the students deserve so that they can be successful and bring back Mrs. Vazina. The Winchden School District Special Education Department needs a complete overhaul. There's been so many complaints filed against the school district with DESI and the superintendent continues to allow broken timelines governed by DESI, rejects IEP requests for students who qualify and there's no oversight of the department as a whole. The middle school principal was recently put on leave. The superintendent would not make parents aware of any issues. In fact, all of this communication and has and continues to state that there was never students in any danger with any situation that has been communicated. But it does seem fishy that the very same middle school principal who follows guidelines, gets IEPs for students, works with 504 plans and truly steps up for those students in the special education department and not only those students in the special education department, but the students that don't have a great home life or don't have anything to look forward to other than school. Has been out of school since February and is not communicating with students, parents or staff. She holds the sped director accountable and follows the students' plans as they are needed. She truly cares about what happens to these students. Creates successful futures for them and ensures that they are able to learn within the parameters that they need. We need her back so she can continue to be a light for her students. And the staff within the sped department that do not follow guidelines of DESI needs to be gone, terminated. They care more about keeping the numbers low for this district than truly allowing students the help that they need. In less than a week's time, two hundred and fifty-four members of this community have signed, sharing their support for this district. But not only are there members in this community that have signed, there are student signatures on this petition. Along with those signatures, there are comments from students regarding Mrs. Vazina. You may not have the many members in your audience today, although I'm sure that if there was a way for people to attend your meetings via Zoom and technology that is accessible in two thousand twenty-three, that you would have quite an audience here. But the signatures on this petition are proof that, that to you, that they support this cause. They want our special education department overhauled and refocused on the needs of the students and they want Mrs. Vazina back in school. So now the ball is in your court and it wasn't yours, but it should be in theirs now.
I have a question for the chair.
Thank you.
I have another question. Can I actually ask that a question?
Well, you're more than welcome to present and in your presentation a question. The superintendent is, is not authorized to respond.
I don't care if he does. So I trained some of the kids to go to school here. My name is Kyle. Mr. King, I would actually like to know when you're gonna take the time to direct and talk to all these parents that are here. Because it does seem like you're putting it off quite a lot. And for me to stand up here and do this, it takes a lot because I have nothing to do with this. But it's on you and it needs to be taken care of. What are you gonna do that for these people? That's the question. I think you deserve to give them an answer and they deserve an answer as well. Soon.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Finances, let's go.
Okay. Let's have a ball this act.
You've, you've never had finance slapped for.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so my name is Mike Barrow. I emailed you earlier in the week. I thought you asked from you. You asked for answers and you asked for answers back. So the three questions I have were asked at the public hearing and I just, which I never received an answer, so I now will ask them again. Given you, we're in notice, I will appear later on in the meeting. The mini split system that is being put into Toy Town to accommodate the move with the heating and electrical air conditioning. I was, I've never heard what the cost of that is. Secondly, the price of removing of the classrooms from building to building, you know, along that because again, these are outside the realm of the normal operating budget. And lastly, the Robinson Broadhurst had paid for the playground in Toy Town coming out. Memorial to be installed many, many years ago, which chair was taking place. I was, I was asking if that, which is age appropriate, is going to be moved to, which again, obviously wasn't, you know, be moved to over to Toy Town so the children, when they know that, will have age appropriate. The Toy Town PTO and group raised twenty thousand dollars for these playground equipment at Toy Town for age appropriate children. Will that playground set then be moved over to Memorial? Now that the kids are gonna be age appropriate there. These are the three questions I have. I hope to hear the answer later on this evening. Thank you very much for the time and I'm, I'm sorry that this is a touchy subject right now, but uh, thank you.
I mean, it's actually pretty good for you to hear though because you're a candidate, right? So you would be walking into this.
Yeah.
Other public comments this evening?
I think we've all gone twice.
Check in one more time? Anyone else want to address? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you for the comments uh, in the school committee uh, and in any open body, there, there is not a, a public debate. However, this information has now been received. Many of you have written to the school committee, divided your feedback and comments separately in written form. Just speaking only for myself and not for others, that is very much appreciated. I suspect others appreciate that as well. And this, this kind of exchange is also very helpful. What it does is it makes us aware of the things that as school committee members, we're not necessarily aware the same way that, that you are, that teachers are, that staff are. And so this, this is very helpful. The school committee's role is quite limited. A couple of you mentioned that today. But within the scope of our ability to encourage action within the schools and to actually complete our jobs of creating policies and, and setting the budget and hiring the superintendent. Those, this is the kind of information that we need in order to do that work. And so thank you very, very much for everyone that came out and spent their, their time to, to address us. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
In, in the interest of just because I, I think that it is important that we have a chance to thank the parents for being here, all of us. You know, I, I do think it's important that we acknowledge that tonight with a lot of what we heard was very moving and I want to thank our students for coming up and speaking and putting it all on the line. I am always part of these student leaders. So I, I think it's important that we acknowledge that. I know you did for us as a chair, but I think if any other members would get to know that we had the opportunity to acknowledge that. We did hear you. We see you. And nothing you say is falling on deaf ears. I don't know how other members feel, but I just want to say that. Don't run out of the room.
Understanding that more than likely, everyone on the school committee feels the same way. If there's any other comments that school committee members would like to make, I welcome them. Mr. Chair. Great. Uh, just real briefly, I would I agree with what Ms. Cass said. I did hear somebody earlier, one of the speakers, say that nobody up here cares. I can assure you that's not the truth at all. We wouldn't be up here to begin with if we didn't care. And we have heard what you have to say. And it's, we have to take it from here. There's nothing we can do tonight. That doesn't mean that, that you haven't been heard. So thank you.
I absolutely thank everyone for attending and providing information and your perspective and your voice because like Brian said, we don't know everything from a day-to-day perspective and so I absolutely welcome hearing from people. I know that this is not easy, but thank you for doing just that, what you thought was right to let us know. Thank you.
If I might have a moment? I do want to say that I'm impressed by everybody that came up here tonight. Guys did your homework. You articulated your positions well. Democracy is messy. It's, it's hard. Doesn't doesn't always go smoothly the way it's supposed to. Having a voice, having a voice is important. And for you to be here tonight and have the courage to come and share those views is really what democracy is all about. And I am proud of all of you for coming here tonight and sharing. Not just passion. We can all get passionate, but what you did was you did your homework. You supported your points of view with some information that's helpful. It's not just passion. And the other thing is, I think you were with all the passion that you have, I appreciate the fact that you were polite, respectful and you shared what you needed to share without you know, being very disrespectful or unkind because we have a tough job too. And we're trying to do the best that we can for the students and the staff and you.
You can start by reinstating Jess Vazina. I second that. I don't think too many people here would disagree.
I just want to end by saying thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address you because, so I'm a senior and I had Ms. Vazina in middle school right when Summit was just starting. And I, like I perform very well academically and I adjust to things like that well. And like I know how that programming can help kids, especially when it's done right. And I just want to like thank you specifically because I youth, youth voice to me, it's like my bread and butter. I love it. And it's, I, it's so, so, so important, like all of you like sharing your opinions and your experiences and addressing a body like this to try and get action done in this kind of meeting. It's important and it's respected and I respect all of you for wanting to do that. But you specifically, the only student here, I know what that's like. And I get it and that's scary and the first time I did something like that, I feel the same way. And I also know what it's like growing up in this district and having connections with teachers and administrations in that way. It means a lot. And I understand what it means like to not have that and to feel the effects of it. I completely understand. So I just would like to say thank you to all of you and I completely enjoyed hearing your perspectives.
Someone hug her. I'm over here.
I think we all want to.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on with our agenda tonight, we do have a consent agenda. In your email and in your packets, you have minutes. When is this from? From March 16th. Are there any concerns with the minutes? Any errors? Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes of March 16th, 2023. Somebody asked.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, those in favor. Alicia? Great. I, Larry? Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and it is unanimous, five to zero. Tonight, we have another item on our consent agenda, which is a field trip. There is information in your packet about the field trip and a field trip request form. Perhaps the superintendent can, or someone else in the audience can give us information about this?
No, I was just gonna say it's a relatively self-reliant story. It's a pre-K field trip. It's in front of you because it does go to New Hampshire, so it's required people to, um,
Have they done this before? This is the same place? Mr. Chair. Great. I move to approve the pre-K field trip to Troy, New Hampshire. It's presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the item? So we'll take a roll call vote. Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Great. Alicia?
Yay.
And the chair votes aye and it is unanimous. Uh, that brings us to the superintendent's report and the, we we not have a budget, no budget update, no budget update, no. So we have the district reorganization update.
Yeah, just a quick update. A few, a few items and then specifically I don't remember where Mike went. Is he outside? Okay. And, and inclusive in that will address Mike's question as well. Uh, reorg update. So we're just kind of getting past INCAST. I don't know if you're aware, but we've been in the thick of INCAST here recently. Uh, so the committees have not been meeting recently, but the work is kind of continuing to meet the deadlines we committed to earlier on in the process. So one of the things I think that happened today is the last meeting, we talked about disposal of outdated materials, the bins for that with the organization we're using were delivered and distributed to the buildings today. So when I say bins, those are actually sitting on pallets. It's like a four by four by four box that sits on top of the pallets and they can get them removed. So those were distributed and set up today across the district and in each of the buildings. The other piece that was requested, I think, as well by the WCA as a part of this process and I think made a lot of sense was for our, what we call our assignment letters for next year to be distributed much earlier than we typically do. So the assignment letters are simply a letter that just specifies to each person throughout the district. And I, I mentioned that every TA that applies to every, every every party unit, but they get a letter that tells them where they'll be in next school year. We typically have a deadline of around July 15th for that, but we felt that it was appropriate with the reorganization maybe much earlier, so we did do that. But we flew into spring break. Those have been distributed to not just the WTA, but every every employee in the district as to where they'll be housed if you will for the next school year and what their, what their assignment is. As you know, those assignments are at, at the end of at the will of the, the principal to a degree that teachers can always be assigned within their within their certification area within a building. So if they have gotten their billing assignments and generally speaking, what they would be teaching for the following year. So those went out the week before spring break as we had promised in our timeline. And then the other piece that, that they're up against now is room assignments within each of the physical locations. So we've committed to having that out here soon. I know that administrators are working on those room assignments and figuring out address being juggling of rooms and those types of things to accommodate classroom space and so on. So we should expect that here in the next, I would say, week to ten days to have those, those out to teachers and so on as well. Most specifically, I address the teachers. So that's the update as it relates to the kind of specifics going on. To address the question that Mr. Barrow had specifically, my, it's gonna, gonna be a tag team piece here tonight with sort of just generics and then some more specifics relative to some of the numbers. So the mini splits sort of slash HBAC and we've mentioned this when we, when we started this process is that we actually put in for a grant. It's very specific to, to the HBAC grant specifically. Can't be used for anything else. So we've applied for and received that grant and that will sort of put the ceiling, if you will, on what we spend for, you know, for the mini split. It doesn't, of course, take into account rebates and those types of things that are actually out there today. So even though there would be a cap on what that dollar amount is, we will be pursuing rebates and those types of things as well. And I'm gonna let Ms. Babinski sort of speak to the grant itself and a little bit of that process. But again, just to reiterate, it's very specific to HBAC.
Mr. Chair, am I? Sorry. I'm sorry. Amanda?
The, the grant that Mr. King is, is speaking about is called the IDAT grant. It's a grant that came out earlier this year. It's, it's sort of unique in the sense that each district that qualifies or is eligible receives a certain allocation. And so it's assigned as, as though it's an entitlement grant similar to our SA, SA and IDEA grants. So the town of Winchden is entitled to just over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this indoor air quality. It is set up kind of funky in the way that it goes until two thousand twenty-seven and we need to reapply each year. Not for the guarantee of the funds because we have received that allocation and they've, you know, it's very clear as to how the, in the RFP is how that, that goes. But they need to check on the these, there's certain steps that we need to account for and you can only draw down the funds that have been renewed and whatnot. And so part of this grant involves feasibility study. But basically, we have lots of providers that, you know, coordinate with our electric and, and heating providers. And they do a scope of work which can tell us, you know, in order to improve the air quality in the entire building, this is how many units you would need and how many stations. And there's some technology involved as far as how it's transmitted because they're trying to get rid of some of these refrigerant substances and whatnot. And then you receive rebate guarantees from the utility providers and you kind of work backwards in that sense. So for example, there may be one unit that can feed to four classrooms. So maybe we're able to we're able to, based on the needs of our specific school building, because of course it does affect, uh, boilers, electricity, all these things, we may be able to outfit four classrooms, eight classrooms, twelve classrooms. Um, I, I think that machines can go up to eight classrooms per, per unit, but, um, so we're working with companies to obtain that information and DESI to sort of get all those, those funding. So to answer the question, we're going to sort of work backwards into it in the sense of what we're entitled to utilize is what we're going to utilize, uh, and anything additional beyond that would be sort of something that come back forward, should be with that.
Who is the, I'll, I'll put a break in one second. Who is the HVAC grant from?
DESI. Uh, it's, it's a federal grant that DESI is sponsoring for the, uh, RFP.
Sounds like a somewhat convoluted process. Just in terms of actually getting things installed and, and up and running, what kind of a timeline are we looking at? Are they going to be in and operating in time for the next academic year or what?
That is the goal. Um, it is, it's a little bit complicated on the, on the front end of things. Um, it's very similar to the way that we've been doing for ESAR funding. Um, our goal is certainly to have the oven running for the start of the school year. Anybody that's been working through the COVID and ESAR experience is going to, uh, okay, isn't going to guarantee anything as far as supply chains, labor shortages, and whatnot. But that, that is our goal, and that is what we're working on with these vendors.
Yes, Chair.
Karen?
So my question kind of goes back, goes back to, um, goes back to actually all the HVAC work we did because of COVID, how did, how did these systems tie in with all the work we had done?
I'm glad you asked, because that was something I was waiting for a break here to, to address.
Yeah, because I, I really, I'm just thinking of all the work we already poured money into. So we've already put a huge chunk of money into it. So we're now spending more money, which I understand regardless of, or however.
So to answer that, this is air-conditioned, Toy Town has no air conditioning anywhere in the building. We'll just, so to sort of this one, right? So, um, what we did previously in Toy Town very specifically, so just kind of together, everything, every building was different in terms of its needs during COVID. Specifically in Toy Town, there was, uh, no fresh air exchange, um, due to the way the system was set up. So there were a lot of issues, uh, in Toy Town, just really due to the age. So, uh, just to kind of take a couple of minutes to rehash that. Um, so what we had, the system that we had there had a couple of, had a couple of issues. One, there was no, um, what we found was, when we dug into it, there was no sort of, I don't know if there's a better way to say it, but exhaust of stale air in a classroom. Those systems were all blocked. So the systems there were very old, very, two separate, um, what we call unit ventilators. So on one end of a classroom, if you can kind of visualize, and you've seen those walls in Toy Town where, um, they've got the old metal cabinetry and vents and they've got a lot of those. So one end of that has sort of an exhaust, if you will, that, that pulls air out, and then the unit that actually heats the room is also intended to bring fresh air in. So what we found when we started doing that work was that, A, uh, most of the units for exhausting, uh, for exhausting stale air were actually blocked from the outside, uh, which was kind of as a result of the seventies, you know, that building was built back in the fifties, I believe it was, um, during the energy crisis. So they weren't wanting to lose any heat. Secondly, the intake actually has, uh, a louver that opens and fluctuates to bring in fresh air to bring, while the heat kicks in, that, that's another fan that kicks in, pulls fresh air, in theory, from the outside, mixed with inside air and blows it across what is very similar to, um, if anybody has sort of baseboards, sorry, I'm looking at baseboards, like a baseboard heater where you've got that running through your room. So it blows it across that, it brings fresh air and heat in the room. Again, the louvers were shut off, so that we didn't bring in cold air. So what we repaired in that particular moment, um, was the ability to bring in fresh air and exhaust stale air, but also have, um, actual controls. So the other variable with that is everything in our buildings, and it's not just our buildings, it's everywhere, are pneumatically controlled. So we've all seen the thermostats on the walls, if you've ever sat in a classroom, you hear the clicking when they kind of go off and on. Those in Toy Town were no longer, um, working, those were plumbed with old copper lines that were actually poured as a part, a part of the foundations. And what they used to do in the fifties was they use copper, put it in the foundation first, and poured the foundation on top of it. No way to repair those things, once they're shot, they're shot. So they were actually quite literally, we called them, you know, manually controlled, which meant a teacher walked over, lifted the lid, and flipped the switch on and off to turn, you've heard it, right? To turn the fans, to turn the fan on and off to bring, to just blow air, quite frankly, after any pressure. So what we repaired in that moment were all of those things. So we now have the situation, when you get, the piece that we did that is a little bit unique, I think, in Winchenden, was to install CO2 sensors in each of the rooms tied to that, that stale air. So if you, if you go into a room in Toy Town, there's a, a piece that looks very similar to, well, you see if there's sort of a smoke detector, um, that's actually a CO2 detector. So that actually triggers, when CO2 level rises to a certain level in the room from just breath, um, it'll actually trigger the exhaust and intake. Um, and then we have controls on the wall now and electronic systems, but it's all wired in. So, and it's also all wired into a computer, blah, blah, blah. Sorry, it's a long explanation. What we're doing now is air conditioning, so it will complement that entire system. It won't override it, it won't reduce its effectiveness or so on and so forth. Mini splits don't necessarily bring in fresh air, it's, it's, um, you know, a different unit than a, than a central HVAC, we don't have all those types of things. So we're actually in a unique situation where we have all that set up, um, that you would typically have in a centralized HVAC, um, to complement the, uh, the mini splits, so.
I just wanted.
It's not, it's not, um, reducing any of the work or kind of minimizing the monies that we spent prior for that work. It's a complementary system. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, in the long line.
I thought that might offset some other questions.
It did though, yeah.
Um, anything else to add on the HVAC year funds?
No, the only thing is that this, this particular grant, the, um, the IBAC grant, correct, two and I, it is, um, again, an entitlement allocation to us, and it is specific to indoor air quality with the, um, it's sort of piggybacking up here, ESAR funding, so it's supposed to build upon, um, like, some of the improvements that we've been making. So, um, it's very pigeonholed as to what we can use that, those, those funds for.
For all intents and purposes, if we don't use it for this, we're.
No, I get it, I mean, the name is IBAC, so I mean, that's pretty much, that's a given.
It was actually just a bit shocking that it popped up during time for us, not expected. Um, the other piece, uh, that Mr. Barbaro has sort of asked, and that, that, um, I think we've, we spoke to, well, long ago during, um, sort of speaking about the reorg, it was raised by the committee here, about the, the move itself and what that would cost in terms of boxes and louvers and so on and so forth, as we've mentioned repeatedly that that would be done by louvers. Um, what we've gone on at this point is that during COVID, when we did a very similar piece where the entire building of Toy Town boxed up and moved to, to Murdoch, uh, the Murdoch building, uh, in that time, you know, pulling old, um, requisitions and whatnot, that, that move actually cost us, um, at the district, under eight thousand dollars, I don't know, seventy-nine hundred, seventy-eight and change, something to that effect, so rounding to eight thousand. We have kind of conservatively estimated for, uh, thirty thousand dollars for a move, um, for boxes. We don't have anybody in yet, we don't have boxes packed, quite frankly. Um, we have some folks up on, you know, that we know we could call. Um, and that, as we mentioned, uh, previously, would be charged through our School Choice account, where we have, um, you know, a number of funds in that particular account to, uh, pay for that move itself. I don't do anything to add to that specifically.
No, I mean, we did share the, the estimated balance for School Choice, um, during the presentation, which, uh, we believe will be around five hundred thousand for July first.
Do we have, have you contacted any louvers to get estimates?
We've asked and we've, we've talked to them about the box, you know, hey, we expect X number of boxes, so estimating that, let's just say twenty boxes per teacher, um, they've asked to wait until we actually see what that might look like until we get closer to that date. That's what we have at this time.
But we don't have an hourly rate, I mean.
No. Have they been awarded boxes?
So we don't, I mean, that, that's, I mean, you're estimating, you know, or we're not.
I'm estimating based on a prior move that was similar.
Right.
Yep.
It's just, I mean, just speaking as somebody who has moved recently, more recently than maybe more keep other people in this room. You know, I contacted a moving company, they came out, did an estimate, and, you know, sent it to me. Was it the exact rate of, oh, no. However, I mean, I think when you're saying, I estimated, that's totally different. I could estimate way lower.
Well, the estimate is based, the estimate is based on a real move, so I'm not estimating. I'm not walking into classrooms, I'm not walking through a classroom and saying, oh, that one looks like about five hundred bucks, and that one looks like two.
No, I understand.
I'm doing this based on a move that we have actually done within a, a relatively reasonable amount of, of time.
Right. I guess, I, I think we need to have.
Was a real cost.
I just need to know when we're gonna get real, crunchy numbers, like real actual, closer to.
As soon as we have a real number, is that you're gonna hear about it first, but.
I think it would make that call feel better.
Yep, go ahead. Okay. Um, and then moving into, uh, playgrounds, um, specifically, so if we were to kind of, if you go back in time a little bit, our, um, ESAR three grant, sorry, I'm kind of going a little bit beyond what, what Mike is asking, but we'll, we'll address that component as well. And I think we talked about some of this, uh, during the reorganization conversations a while back. We had allocated and is still allocated in the ESAR three grant, um, a specific amount of money for the construction of a new playground, um, generically, I would say. Um, you know, we had, we had seen some and talked to some, I don't know, playground people, manufacturers, I don't know exactly how you classify those folks, but folks who do playgrounds and installations. Um, we earmarked and allocated for a playground at the time, um, for an early, we'll receive sort of pre-K slash kindergarten playground, um, back at that time, recognizing that this very small and outside of, um, outside Memorial store there for the pre-K is, is limited. Um, so we'd already allocated for that type of money, I think, off the top of my head, I don't know, do you have, do we have, what we have allocated?
We allocated four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand dollars for a, a full playground, a high-end playground for pre-K and K and our, uh, other early childhood situations. So, um, with that said, that, that would now go into the, uh, at the Toy Town location. For the most part, old, old playgrounds, if you will, and I say old, you know, somewhat generically, the ones that are in existence, would stay in place. Um, so the ones specifically at, uh, Toy Town, we've, we've gone and looked, um, as recently as this week, and sort of compared heights and those types of things as the playground at Toy Town against, um, most specifically, the playground at, so Memorial sort of has three playgrounds, um, if you will. It has a very small pre-K playground right outside the back doors as you walk out, um, sort of in the cafeteria, they walk out. On the left-hand side, there's a very small playground that has, um, uh, some small pieces out there for, for our pre-K children. Then as you walk straight back, and what you can sort of see when you drive by is a larger playground past the blacktop, um, which is really for grades one and two, and then around the corner and off to the side, and it's fenced in as a, as a, as a sort of a quote-unquote kindergarten playground. So I, I think those are the ones specifically that, that Mike is talking about, that'd be kind of the kindergarten playground and the, and the one over at, um, Toy Town. What we've gone and has done is looked at both of those particular playgrounds for heights and, and access, and sort of student access, if you will, to those playgrounds, the same heights in terms of swings and, and, um, whatever that equipment might be. Um, so there would not, at this point, we don't, we don't see a reason to sort of invest in moving those types of things, and that they are the same height and access for the students. The other component to that is the playground at Toy Town, uh, at the existing Toy Town building would have a brand-new, um, sort of high-end, pre-K type of playground, and if you've ever driven by Toy Town in the afternoon, definitely school lets out. The other playground that currently exists, um, is highly used by the community, is sort of aligned with, I think, some of the work with the, um, with the town plan that, um, going forward, we've discussed with the town. So, uh, it, it's highly used, in fact, we go out each morning and sort of clean up. There's a little bit of cleanup necessary each morning, uh, at the playground at Toy Town. A lot of high school kids show up, uh, other kids, I see them, you know. So tho- those playgrounds would not move, we would probably need to address fencing and how the fencing works, and that would be done as a part of the bid process. This would be a official bid process, it's not going to be, uh, I don't believe, um, somebody that's on a bid list or something like that, and we could actually go out to bid for that and, uh, plan that we already have in place. We have some bids from other districts, um, that have happened recently, um, excuse me for early childhood, pre-K types of playgrounds, so, um, you feel pretty comfortable with the range of, of, relative to what we allocated with ESAR funds, I don't know, a couple of years ago at this point. Do you need to add anything?
No, I mean, the investing in a playground for, for early childhood, uh, it was part of some of the recommendations with, to use ESAR funds for. Um, and so we are, we're at a point where, you know, several school districts in the state have, have done this and gone through the process, and we're really exploring, uh, their experiences as far as, um, whether we do RFP or, or bid, um, just sort of the procurement process, um, as well as, sort of, like that, to me, so, you know, it's, it's never fun to come and say it takes such a long time, but, you know, there's so much work in the, in the front end of things, and ESAR funds are allocated in a similar manner in that we, you know, we have capital expenditure forms that we have to have approved before we can, you know, move forward with each step of, of the process. So there is a lot of sort of front-end work that has to happen to get to the point of, of installation.
And which ESAR is that?
This is ESAR three, so there is a whole other.
Which one's that, when?
Uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So the intent would be to get the front-end work done now before the end of the school year. Um, you know, we're not gonna have, obviously, construction outside of that building while we're still in session. Currently, June twenty-seventh is the last day of school, like, building is in the middle of the summer, and, um, so we, with a, you know, barring any supply chain issues, et cetera, um, double the, to get construction of the playground, so that it's possible after school and so on.
Thank you, Chair. Someone who, uh, I don't use the playground, but it is.
Don't lie.
As someone, as someone who brings someone who uses the playground at Toy Town on occasion. Um, I know you've mentioned, you know, looking at a new fence, and, um, is, is any thought being given to, um, a, a camera or two? Because I know more than once when I've taken Rachel over that, you know, there's netting cut or, you know, other kinds of vandalism at the site.
Yeah, I mean, that, separate from sort of this playground initiative, if you will, but in general, every year, we review security cameras and holes, if you will, especially exterior. Uh, we know there's a number of places, I won't go into details where the holes are, but, you know, we do know a few places, and we, we do have exterior cameras at Toy Town, and we have used those, uh, for a couple of incidents, incidences. Uh, I'm not sure about the ones you mentioned specifically, but we have, we have used those and taken advantage of those in a couple of, uh, instances where some things have happened over there and been able to track that down.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering if there was any possibility to, uh, in terms of having just one or two dedicated cameras that, that would be on that twenty-four seven?
Yeah, I would have to, to be honest, I would defer to bill where all the cameras are and where we have that are dedicated to certain spots, but, um, we are certainly working, at every year.
I think we can do that.
Every year, we add a couple of cameras, uh, you know, to, to fill in some of those gaps, you know, there's some things at the high school and, uh, building as well that we would really like to get cameras on. But, and I know there's some outside of Toy Town, uh, in that area, um, but I can't speak confidently to say that there's something trained right on the playground. I can come back with that.
Um, so we have playgrounds moving, and while playgrounds are moving, we, we would probably have to send out requests for bids, right?
There's a typical bid process, correct?
Right.
The move might not be, it won't be the threat bid, most likely won't be the threshold.
All right. However, at least the playground. It's April twenty-seventh, so we're talking, when do you plan on putting out these, or a, or a bid?
I, I'm not, I don't have a date that I'm gonna give you right this second.
Okay.
To be perfectly frank. I'm well aware of the timelines and where we're at relative to getting some of those things done. The good news is in the bid process that we get to dictate some of those deadlines and when we want responses back and so on and so forth.
My concern, of course, and, and it has been since the beginning of this whole reorg, along with many other concerns that I have, but, but one of the biggest concerns being, you have this timeline in September, we're gonna be up and running, doing all this stuff, is that, let's talk about the fact that everybody knows that people's supply chains, we might not get things, you know, not just HVAC or, or I-VAC or whatever, but also playground equipment, or, and that could include the turf that they use. You know, I'm, I'm just concerned that we need to maybe start thinking about setting a drop dead date.
For?
For when we say, okay, now we need to start thinking about pushing back this, this idea. For when we say, okay, now we need to start thinking about pushing back this, this idea until the following year.
So a couple of things that I mentioned this during the rework process as well, that the window of time for work is not going to change, right? So we're never going to, the window of time to put in a playground or in or to put an H V A system is always going to be after the last day of school. In general, we have a similar situation at the high school with the H V A C for the off boarding for our long-term suspension. We just can't do any of this work until school is out and it's, we want that to be closed by the time, whatever doors open and played on this during September.
Right, but I'm saying, however, you may, you may run into something where if we can't get that bad equipment by the summer, we might have to push this back. I'm just saying, so we may need to start, I'm just putting it out there that we may need to start thinking about that. And I know that I am not always popular for bringing these things up at meetings, but I need to.
I think you're very popular.
However, I think you're lying.
They're the hard questions.
Yes, I, I'm popular for the hard questions, yes. But I, I just want to put that out there on the record right now that we need to start thinking about that drop dead date. Because I just think we need to, because parents need to think. And as, as much as, you know, you're already talking about assignment letters and everything. You know, I'm, I'm just thinking as a parent, you know, like I want to know what's going to be going on next year. So I, I just have to kind of put that out there to our whole committee and just say it like it is at this point.
The updates?
That's the submission picture.
Okay. Questions for the superintendent or Amanda? Okay. One of the good news, well, it's usually good news.
It's good news. It's short because we just came back from break, but I do have some, a long list of dates for everybody. Starting off, we have April twenty ninth at Memorial School is the Springling vendor fair. May first is our annual town election. Everybody saw those. May third intent is preschool screenings. May third is our grade three field trip to Hanover Theater. May fourth Thursday, school committee meeting. May eighth through twelfth is Teacher Appreciation Week. May sixteenth is our Scholars Center for Murdoch High School students. May seventeenth is a half day for the entire district. May nineteenth is our junior senior prom. May twenty sixth is the Special Olympics. May twenty ninth, there's no school because it is Memorial Day. May thirtieth and thirty first are our senior finals. May thirty first and June first and second are kindergarten screenings. June first is class day and June fourth is graduation. Winston preschool screenings will take place on May third and tenth, twenty twenty three by appointment only. Children must be age three or four by August thirty first, twenty twenty three to be eligible. Screening is optional and looks at child, child's development in the areas of speech and language, fine and gross motor skills, cognition and social emotional skills. If you have any concerns about your child, suspect your child may have disabilities or if you do not receive any information packet by mail, please call Kathy at Winston pre K program office at nine seven eight two nine seven three four three six or write email. Good news, and I love to talk student council. Murdock High School Student Council has been awarded the National Gold Council of Excellence this year. It is our ninth consecutive year being awarded this. Thanks, John. Good news, if you want to look at that, it's nine years, it's a lot of years. Moving on, the travel club just returned from Italy. They went over last February break. Ms. Rondo can attest to that.
April break.
Unfortunately, no, sorry, April break. Right here. Eleven students and staff visited Rome in Sorrento, Sorrento?
Yep.
Including Pompeii, Eye of Capri and Monte Cassino. Next year, we will travel to London for visits to Stonehenge, Scotland Yard and the river.
Thames.
Thames. The Tower of London and more. Information can be found in your Google Classroom for registration. We have a limited number of prom tickets available for purchase for juniors and seniors. Tickets may be purchased by May fifth and are available on a first come, first served basis. As of right now, there are only eighteen spots left. Prom will be held on May nineteenth aboard the sensation boat prom. Promenade on will be at three thirty and buses will depart at four P M. Other good news. District Attorney Joe Early visited Murdoch High School yesterday to present us with a check for one thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars from the E N D D grant. This grant money will help offset the transportation costs to Boston for prom. The Murdoch High School Honor Roll Breakfast will be taking place on Tuesday, May second in the Murdoch High School cafeteria for all students who are on the honor roll from quarter second, quarter two and three, sorry. Students will be, were handed out their invitations this afternoon and we're looking forward to celebrating their academic achievement. And then for sports, there isn't much. Tomorrow, there are games away for varsity baseball and softball at West Boylston. Pretty short because we just got back a week ago.
When is scholars?
Scholars dinner is May sixteenth. Do you know what day that is?
Yes, it's Tuesday.
Angelina? Yes, where is the Special Olympics where you go? Murdoch, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the Murdoch tracking field.
Is that a, what day is that?
It's a Friday.
Questions for Angelina?
I have one question. How many, how many awards are you getting at scholars night?
No, she's getting nothing.
Oh, yeah, nothing.
Other questions? Great report. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to, oh, that's made subcommittee reports. Welcome certainly any subcommittee reports, if there are any. The only report that I am aware of is the policy subcommittee, which is still working, but it is on me because I am delayed in getting out all the information that we have for you to review relative to the policy changes. Same update as last meeting. We have updates in the M A S C, which we have to translate into Winchenden policies. That has to happen and come before you in the near future. That is a good amount of administrative work that I have not completed. The second item is we have, I believe it's three policies, a couple of revisions and one new one on various topics that have come to us from the administration. And we are seeking to bring those before the school committee as well, but those also, there have been questions about them and finishing up some of the details. So those are very close to being done. Those will be before you very soon. So nothing to vote on tonight. That's why you don't have to vote on your agenda, but you will in the near future. Other subcommittee, questions about policy? And any other subcommittee updates? Okay, love it. Okay, that brings us to new business. And tonight we had requested an update on the Student Opportunity Act. As you'll recall, Winchenden is one of the beneficiaries of the Student Opportunity Act, wherein certainly not all three hundred and fifty one municipalities and the two hundred and fifty ish municipals and regional schools around the state are. So we find ourselves in an advantageous and enviable position when it comes to state funding in F Y twenty three. The Student Opportunity Act was approved by the legislature based on a, the threat of a lawsuit by another district against the state of Massachusetts. And to avoid litigating any issues relative to the other towns that placed that lawsuit, there was, or the threat of that lawsuit, this act was passed. What the Student Opportunity Act does is basically redoes the calculus around chapter seventy funding. So where we receive a lot of our funding, a lion's share of our funding from the state of Massachusetts as chapter seventy funding that passes through the town, matched by the town, and then comes to the school district. Those funds increased in schools that had previously been disadvantaged by the old chapter seventy formula. So in last year, this year, and for the coming years, which I'm sure we're, we will hear the detail of in just a moment, the Student Opportunity Act is benefiting some small number of towns in Massachusetts and that is that we are one of those. What that means is that we have had a change in our budget for F Y twenty four, which you all saw, the committee saw during our budget negotiations. And we anticipate that, that that will continue to occur as long as the Student Opportunity Act remains in effect and for the duration of the, the time for that act. We had asked for an update from the administration, from Amanda and from the superintendent because this has affected us in ways that are positive. But this also has the kinds of detail that we need to be aware of, especially as we go into future budget negotiations, uh, budget discussions, excuse me. So we have Amanda and Thad to present some information and of course, we'll take questions if there are. Turn it over.
Sure. So I, I apologize, we can't display distributed packets. Many of you all have them electronically as well. So just to kind of backtrack a little bit about S O A. I, I know a few of you are on the committee spend, it was probably, it actually showed up to the, physically year nineteen twenty, so I guess F Y twenty and twenty one. And it actually predated, I believe, Dr. Forsythe being on the committee, actually, if I, if I recall. And the reason that I raise that is in the very first year, the way that S O A funds are distributed was very odd and the districts didn't, it was just sort of a surprise. You were told like, you're told, you're told you've got some money and do something with it. And you got a little packet that said, pick out of this packet, I don't know, fifteen sort of overarching topics of how you'd like to spend that money. And in that moment, we had received fifty thousand dollars and they told us that just goes into your budget. It's a part of your chapter seventy. So if you had the opportunity or kept all those lovely spreadsheets, you would go back and find when we created that budget that we actually set aside in our budget back in, I believe it was twenty twenty one, we had a line item of fifty thousand dollars, we just called it S O A. We created a plan that we had to submit to DESI by picking out of one of these pages of, I don't know, fifteen options or something of how we would spend said fifty thousand dollars. And in the moment, we decided that what we were going to do at that time, we submitted a board and pool plan that was to spend that fifty thousand dollars by sort of hooking in our dual enrollment program by working with our, I guess, rising freshmen at the time. We had a plan in place, this is pre COVID. We had put this all together to say, we're going to spend the entirety of that fifty thousand dollars because that's what we were supposed to do on, in an instant, if you will, on a particular thing. And so what we decided to do in that moment was create an in residence program for every single, if you will, rising freshman over the summer. We put some things to paper. We actually had an agreement with Worcester State University on how to get every single incoming freshman on the Worcester State campus for a week long residential experience at Worcester State. It encompassed a lot of really great things. And it was really fantastic until COVID came in about a month later. At which point, it was a great plan. We submitted, it got approved by DESI, all those fantastic things. And then that money, that fifty thousand dollars, they let us interestingly carry over for a year because of, because of COVID. And SOA sort of got messed up for a little while, which is why it's kind of proven. But all we had was the fifty grand. So we got to the end of that year and we had submitted that plan and said, this is how we want to spend the money. And we thought we were compelled to spend it only that way and we're no longer going to do so because neither of us is allowed on the guest. You finally get into when COVID lifted, and I'm sorry, this is worth, this is lengthy, but there's an important background here in that finally COVID lifted and they said, well, how'd you spend that fifty thousand dollars? They, DESI, and we said, well, we didn't spend that fifty thousand dollars because we submitted the plan to you that said we're going to college campuses and we could. They were like, oh, you didn't have to use it just for that. One of those types of deals, right? And so then it turns out, you know, we finally got some really good money this year. And so there was a lot of confusion around districts as to what was expected of us. And we had the opportunity to then revise our plans. And many districts provided a revised plan, I believe, going into last year. So when we got nine hundred thousand dollars, I can't, last year was our SOA along. So we were never able actually to get the residential piece. It's just never been able to sort of happen for our, our rising freshman. It's still a plan in place that complemented our freshman academy program at the high school. But what we did was we expanded to also our early literacy initiative. Last year, as you'll recall, when, you know, we did the bite season for coming into this particular school year, we had a very large influx of money and we also had a very directed early, sort of early literacy initiative. And we've always had our dual enrollment. So that's all to say that we now, we didn't know this at the time, but now we're beholden to DESI to tell them exactly how we spend every dime and give them an annual report. So, you know, we're very fortunate to have received essentially a million dollars budgetarily, but are also sort of punished at the same time for being caught up by having to report to them on a number of issues relative to the SOA, like the literacy act. That being said, we revised with early literacy and have invested in that. And I, so the first part of tonight, there's a couple of slides that are very specific to early literacy outcomes. They're very specific to grade two for a reason. Grade two, the current grade two students have sort of been the beneficiaries of, they're in the, we're in the third year of our early literacy initiative. So what we have is data at grade, for grade two students that reflect a group, a cohort of students who have received, you know, sort of the product that we have, we have kind of put out there in all of our phonics programs and early literacy sorts of things. So they're a great, great level to sort of see what they look like longitudinal, what's happened in grade two over the years. So when you look at, so if you kind of turn to your slide, I've got a slide here that says, early literacy longitudinal results, all students, grade two. Forgot I had those. So the reason I, early, the SOA is also to do, do use at risk student groups, generally speaking, or to address those, those gaps. So what I have tonight to sort of summarize relative to our early literacy program is the grade two, looking at grade two longitudinal. So if you look at the, at the sort of slide, what we do is we, we progress monitor our students through the dibbles, we've heard it's dibbles in all of our data preparation. It's sort of a reading assessment, if you will. And what we've done is we've looked at grade two each of the last three years. And what you see are three data points for the year of twenty twenty one, which is the beginning of the year, students walking into grade two at the beginning of the year, middle of the year and end of the year. So it shows progress annually, if you will, within that grade level of students. And then what did our grade two students look like at the beginning of the year of twenty one? And so on, again, three data points. And this year, we only got two data points. We don't have the end of year results. The point of this is quite simple. You can see that in that first year, our grade two students, they came in at a pretty low level. So what this is, is a chart that shows where they're at from a proficiency standpoint at different points of the year. So the left hand or excuse me, the Y axis, if you will, the vertical axis is actually the percentage of kids who are proficient at a given time. So you can see that in twenty twenty one, where it was the first year of our literacy program, these students hadn't received anything yet, that the incoming second graders, what they sort of, what, what that looked like. And then you can see it about the fourth dot over is the incoming students at the beginning of the year, twenty one, twenty two. And it's a very different profile. Those students have then had a year's worth of direct literacy instruction or even the new instruction. And so you can see that they came in much higher as a grade level than the year prior, the students did in grade two the year prior. And then this year, once again, you can see that coming into the year, the second graders coming into the year, these second graders now have had two full years of our, of our literacy programming, where they came in from a proficiency perspective as a grade level at the beginning of the year and the middle of the year. So what you can see is it's a really great trend moving forward. And we're sort of really pleased that SOA in some ways, and I'm not really happy with DESI telling us we have to give them all these great reports at this point, but this was something that sort of revealed itself as a result of that. So we're really happy with the outcomes of the literacy programming that's been going on at, very specifically here, the early literacy that's been going on at Memorial School. The outcomes are really, really positive as students have been sort of immersed in this literacy programming over, over three years. this literacy programming over, over three years. So we felt like this was a really great graph. The next page is very specific then, because as I mentioned, SOA is about closing gaps and underserved populations and so on across your district, and this is specifically to our special education population, so any student on IEP that, that, you know, that then we, we progress monitor with our, with DIBELS, which is a, which is a very standard way to monitor. And you see a very similar trend, it's a little bit suppressed, if you will, beneath the, the total population. So the first slide would include, of course, special education students, as it's all students in grade two, and then the second slide is only students on IEPs. But again, you can see that each year, at the beginning of the year, those students who have enjoyed, if you will, the early literacy initiative, as they come into that year, they have a much higher starting point, which gives them, is all of our students a huge wake up. So we felt like this is very reflective, a very reflective way to show our early literacy initiative in the district. Any questions on that? I'll stop on those two pieces, because I don't have another slide on specifically early literacy.
It might be the next slide, but I'm curious what monies were spent on what issues resulted with this.
That's going to be the final slide, so yeah, that'll, that'll come up at the end.
One more question, I think, on this before we leave it. Oh, are these students also being assessed using the Renaissance in addition to the?
It depends on, if you'll recall from Ms. Gilson's presentation, where they are as readers, they qualify, whether or not they qualify for which assessment, so it's all, it's dependent, I guess, is the correct answer.
So some, some students in grade two are assessed, not using DIBELS, but using the other assessment, is that as?
This would be all, all students get the DIBELS regardless, and then that would dictate whether or not they qualify for the, the STAR slash Renaissance, if they're considered a reader. There's some qualifier, that if you're a reader or a developing reader, as to what Renaissance test you qualify for, which is very different, it's more about standards and so on, this is about phonics and base level reading, this is really just directly assessing where you're at, phonics and, and, you know, word dissection, all those types of things.
Okay.
The, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause, I do not have a slide for our other project, and there's a good reason for that, I suppose, which is our, the other initiative that we have under SOA and the plan that we submitted to DESI, the revised plan, is still continues to be our sort of early college dual enrollment program. We sent the report to DESI, there has been an official report submitted, these graphs were part of that report. And then there was a narrative sent around our dual enrollment program, where we had some really fantastic numbers off literally the DESI website, which the intent of our dual enrollment program at the time, which was begun in 1920, actually, was, not 1920, year 2019, actually, school year 19, yeah, 19, yes.
Wow. I'm not that old.
So, you know, the time that we raised, this was pre-SOA, and the reason that we started it is when we looked at a lot of our data in our district, we had the sixth lowest matriculation of students in the four-year schools, as a high school in the entire state. That was balanced against having, I'm gonna say, the average SAT scores. So we had, you know, what, high-performing students, you know, they were average, if you will, across the state against all of the S, average SAT scores across the state, but we weren't sending students off to college, we had a barrier there. So one of the things we tried to do was reduce that barrier by setting up the dual enrollment program in partnership with, with Worcester State. When we came up with that program, it was very specific, we listened to what, you know, I was told at the time, we've tried that here before and it failed, it won't work. And so in listening to why it wouldn't work, there were, there were two interesting pieces. One, well, really one interesting piece was that the students didn't go, the students didn't attend their dual enrollment classes. Where were they? They were at the Mount. And so it was, they didn't go, they wouldn't go and take their classes, and so they failed the classes, and dual enrollment was not a success. On further investigation, it really was revealed that the students did have transportation to get to the Mount to take said classes, and as a result, they failed, or, you know, didn't have good attendance, and it didn't work. So the intent was to remove that barrier, which is transportation, which we know is that there's an issue in, in our region, and so we were able to do that by bringing our dual enrollment program in-house. Dual enrollment, for those of you that don't know, is a situation where students earn high school credit, at the same time they're earning college credit for one given course. So you have a student that takes freshman, a high school senior who takes freshman English, and as a result, they get freshman English credit and a college transcript at the same time that they get their high school credit on their high school transcript for graduation requirements. We started that program in 2019-2020 with great success, about 20 to 25% of each senior class so far has participated.
Yes.
They have graduated, generally speaking, around 19 college credits.
Yes.
Upon graduation, which is fantastic. But the data that we were after in the moment is, is that translating to, is that, is that raising aspirational levels to go to a four-year college? And looking at the data going back to about 2014, which the other part of the story is, even though I submitted a report to DESI, I don't have access to it, but let me get a copy of it, even hours, but at any rate, we'll get it later, I'm sure, but what we found was, pre-dual enrollment program, our numbers are percentage of a graduating class that was matriculating to a four-year college, and that is identified as if they still maintained college membership, they keep a little four-year school in March of their, let's call it their freshman college year. When we started this program, going back to, and looking at data going back to as far as 2014, 15, that DESI still has, that data actually showed that we were a district that were in single digits in terms of the percentage of graduating classes. We were as low as 8% of our graduating seniors were matriculating to a four-year college and, and obviously, we stayed there until March of that year. That number has raised dramatically into, you know, upwards of 20 to 30% of our graduating seniors are now matriculating to four-year colleges and still there as of March of that freshman year. Certainly took a dip with COVID, not gonna lie, but the numbers have, coming out of COVID, you know, so what you see is sort of, we had a great sort of acceleration, a little bit of a dip with COVID, even though our program still ran, been very successfully, we still had remote classes and so on and so forth for those students, and we're now back up on a rise, but we've never dipped below, I think, 20%, even during COVID, and it's coming from, I think, a single-digit, eight, nine percent of our students matriculating to four-year colleges. So it's been definitely a success, and we're looking to expand that program. And the reason I, again, the DESI website was not working when I went to go provide this report tonight, their history button only showed 21, 22, so I couldn't get further back to get those numbers. When I get those, again, I have access to the actual narrative that I see going to DESI, I can bring those back forward when the website's working. So they're, they're there for all to see. But it was a very, very positive trend. So the two SOA initiatives that we endeavored in have, have really produced the results that we were, we were interested in. The final page here before the questions is, what did that funding look like? So last year, we have to sort of, to DESI, we have to really justify the $960,000 that we received, if you will, in SOA funds for Chapter 70 last year. That, that was the amount that we received, excuse me, for our current school year. So this is, this is a report of what we have in this school year. And so what you, what you see here is Initiative Two and Initiative One, the color code, that's how DESI actually sort of identifies these initiatives. Initiative Two is our dual enrollment program, Initiative One is the early literacy program. So what we've done relative to the way that we also send it off to the Department of Education is break down what that looks like. So I'll, I'll let Amanda speak to some of that, but I'd like to, before we go, just kind of bring you back to budgeting a year ago, coming into this season, if you will, to this school year, and what we did at that time. We hired two additional grade-level teachers at early literacy grades, we hired two additional allied artists to allow for more robust common planning time and data analysis, all of those are at the elementary level that contribute into this. We hired a math coach, very specifically to complement our math program. So those, those are the types of things that, when we look at how we spend our SOA funds, we identify those positions as an example, and it's how we sort of get those numbers. Now, just because we identified these two initiatives doesn't mean that we can also identify how we've spent funds underneath those 15 or 16 other sort of varied initiatives. So an example is we could spend money on special education, which is an endeavor. This year, as you know, if you'll recall, going into this school year, we also hired an administrator, an additional administrator to help offset some of the timelines and different things that were missing. So those are the types of things that you're seeing in here across the initiatives. So Amanda put this piece together, I don't do anything additional that you want to speak to relative to the breakout of dollars, but that's where the money is in terms of the SOA funding.
No, that's, that's exactly what I was, what I was going to speak to, is just sort of remembering, you know, these, these reporting features have to correlate back to, you know, a year ago when you did your budgeting, budgeting process. So, you know, Mr. King kind of outlined it there, and then obviously for next year, you know, we'd be talking about things like, you know, our tuitions and our additional social education teachers and contracted services and things like that. So, you know, Mr. King did a really nice job of just sort of explaining what those classroom teachers do. So some of it is indirectly related to how we're going to accomplish the initiative, but it's, it's outlined here, this is how it was reported.
So it's important to note that when we create the budget and whatnot, we're not identifying folks necessarily as SOA, but then we go to report to DESI at the end of the year, they want to know, you know, they're not saying, hey, that's, that's a separate pile of money, and you must spend it as such, it's just part of our funding, and at which point, when we go and report back, we can break it out and say that we've got folks in these areas and we specifically hired and so on and so forth. So you'll recall that this year, when we presented the budget, I think Amanda did a great job of actually identifying the SOA, the additional funds that we got ahead of time, we didn't know we were going to have to be doing this type of thing when we were doing this last year. So if you recall, the budget this year, there was a pie chart that actually identified the additional SOA funds that we, that we acquired in FY24, and already identified how that will be spent going into next year. So just sort of taking that same model in our DESI reporting, so.
Pre-signed for last April 2024.
Just to come, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Just wanted to say, it was nice to see the progress to show that early literacy works. So that's good. You gotta build that foundation for the little ones before they get to middle of high school, so it's good, it's great to see.
There's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of press right now around early literacy, not just within Massachusetts, but nationally. There's a lot of talk about what is called the science of reading these days, which is the new buzzword, but you're, it's all the time, if you see anything on the app or anything else about, about schools and education, you're going to see something called the science of reading. And the science of reading is not a curriculum per se, it's a philosophy, it's an approach to how kids learn to read, as, as was the old sort of approach for something called balanced literacy. And so there's a real movement, a really strong movement away from balanced literacy into this science of reading. But science of reading isn't something you go out and purchase. You know, I don't say, hey, I want the science of reading curriculum, it's a way of teaching reading that could complement the curriculum that we have, which is very phonics, you know, it's phonics-driven. So the old balanced literacy has, it's sort of moved into the direction of, if you'll remember, I'm sure it was from, the old whole language, which was, you know, sort of written off at some point, that, that just didn't work. The balanced literacy sort of brought it back to that, that realm, and so some of the old pieces that we used to sort of progress monitor students, you'll note, have sort of disappeared. So there was a Fontes and Penel that we used for years, FNP is what we call it. Lucy Calkins was a very popular balanced literacy people. But what happened when the science of reading came out was everybody started to take a closer look and thought, none of those were evidence-based programs, they were just thoughts, this might work, this seems like really, seems like a great idea. So the Lucy Calkins and the FNP types of things didn't have any evidence behind them, they were just products brought forward by folks with good intentions. Science of reading is evidence-based and says, this, what we have found is, this is how kids actually learn to read, is, it's revolving around phonics, direct phonics instruction that complements your, your core program. So that's what we took on about three years ago, and I think you've seen, you've seen some really great progress.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharon, a question. You mentioned that you're tracking four-year placement, are you tracking two-year placement or community college, any community college placement or even just career placement? Or is it just career?
No, it's a great question. We, we track all of it. The piece that's complicated for us about the four-year placement is everyone, for the most part, every one of our students applies to, to your colleges, and by state law, they're all accepted. So it's a little bit misleading to track the two-year. We know a number go off, and we do track their persistence rate. To be honest, students that go to our local two-year, you know, with the Mount, and this is actually also in conversations with the Mount, not just about winching about around a lot of our local schools, is they're not, they're not seeing the persistence at the two-year due to whatever reasons are, they're actually, the Mount is actually looking into what the whys of why are kids showing up at the Mount but then not persisting for an entire year. So we do track it, but the numbers aren't, I wouldn't call them overly reliable at this point, just because we know every single student applies, it's just one of the things we've been working with for a long time. In terms of alternative pathways, if you will, non-college-bound, the only thing that DESI officially tracks really is, you know, the piece that you picked up is military. We're able to track our, our tracks, it's brought, so maybe you have, I don't know if it, I'm listening on this, but I guess, I don't know, I'll debate on that, but I will say that we're currently working with, and I have brought this forward at this point, but I will say that one of the things we're pursuing very strongly with the Mount as opposed to that two-year program, in the traditional, let's go get an associate in graduate colleges, go show up at the Mount and start those classes. We've identified, and Chris Cass has brought this up regularly, and I've, I've been sitting, sitting on my hands to not talk about this, but I, we've finally had some really, some productive meetings with the president of the Mount about looking at a number of the certification types of programs that the Mount offers. So to complement our dual enrollment program, which is for, for college-bound kids, I mean, it's a specific subset, and I, as real as anybody else, not every student's college-bound, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, but what we need to do is set them up for success, not just for themselves, but I think also for our community, right? So one of the things that we're, we're really working with the Mount on right now is if you were to go onto their website, and we're also working with HEAL and Hayward Hospital around this, it complements everybody's initiatives here, but to also have tracks, if you were to go on to, if you were to go on to the Mount website, you'll see that they have all sorts of certification programs. I'm just making some things up here, but CNAs, EMTs, lobotomists, there's something with nutrition. They've got a million things that fall under what they call Allied Health. I'm targeting that one specifically for a reason, which is, and there's a lot of certifications that don't necessarily require associates to be in. So the reason I'm, I'm bringing that one up specifically is one of the classes that we offer through dual enrollment is an Allied Health introductory course that the Mount offers. And one of the things I'm trying to get to happen is for every one of our juniors to take that class. And the reason being is it's a prerequisite for any Allied Health track at the Mount. Doesn't matter what you pick, everybody has to take this course. But it's a really neat course, because it's a survey course, it's sort of akin to the Voke, where the Voke takes kids in their first, I think, semester, I'm not, I'm not a great Voke person, but they go through the routine, you know, like, let's check each shop, and then they get to pick. This class is a similar idea, where what they do is bring in professionals from each of their areas, and they give a lecture on whatever it takes to be an EMT, or, you know, what it looks like to be a CNA, or what it looks like to, all of these things. And so kids get exposed to all of those pieces, and when they finish the class as well, what they get is, I, I think they're all CPR certified.
Yeah, CPR and first aid.
CPR and first aid certified. But it also exposes them to these things. So what we would like to do, what we're working on doing and trying to pursue a little bit here, is creating a complementary track to our dual enrollment, where the students who would go through that class as a junior, which would be a one semester class, you get college credit for it, and so on and so forth, could then say, man, I'm really interested in, become an EMT, at which point, their second semester of their junior year, first of their senior and second of their senior, they could be taking classes, and they would be considered dual enrollment, because they're college classes, they're offered there, where they could, again, complement, you know, they, they could be considered dual enrollment, and they could be servicing their science classes or whatever that might be, but they could graduate then with, if not a certification, really, really close to having a certification, where they may only have taken a couple more classes, and it might lead to them wanting to pursue an associate's or beyond. But at the very least, they could come out with something more than, I don't know what I want to But at the very least, they could come out with something more than, I don't know what I want to do. Right? So it's something that we're actually, quite honestly, in the middle of talks with Mount Waukesha to see if we can get that off the ground in a meaningful way. But the starting point would be to, when we already have the class in the high school, just get every junior to sit through that class. It's a low threshold class, but it's a great survey class where they get exposed to so many different careers and gives them a career path. It's a really long one to answer your question, but it's something, you're welcome. I know you like her books.
And you find out if you're going to paint it or sign it, won't you?
It is. But it's something that is really, really important for us.
Do you find out if you're going to paint it or sign it, won't you?
I'm sure.
But you know Ronan, Ronan's going to get back at you for now waiting so long to do that.
I'm sure.
Because, you know, he could have gotten closer to this paramedic theory.
Yes. I, I think it's a really important point, and I, I think that, you know, there's a lot of opportunity currently at Hayward. Hayward's in a shortage with a lot of different things. We've raised, I recently had a meeting with Hayward with HEAL around some of their initiatives, especially around health and food in the Mount, to kind of talk about how we can move this forward. Hayward's pursuing some, some really interesting grants that would complement all this, that it wouldn't have to all be dependent on our, our general budget or our SOA fund. So I'm pretty excited about it. It would be great to see our kids.
You should have Ronan now.
Back for some.
You should have Ronan come and talk to the juniors and not any of that. He started that too, because he can give a real life experience. And he could also partner with you because, like, believe he knows two of the instructors up there.
Well, the other interesting piece that allows, I'm sorry. The other interesting piece, the other, the other interesting, the other interesting piece that this sort of allows if we had talks, summarize, put the Mount on is, is sort of doing an end around vocational programming, if you will. So as an example, the Mount has early childhood programming. So a student could graduate from high school and go to the Mount and sign up to do, get a degree, if you will, an associate's in early childhood. That's fantastic. They could go and do the vet tech stuff. Fantastic. But if we run those things as opposed to a vocational program, as a dual enrollment program, right? Where students stay here and do dual enrollment, I'm not running, or we are not running a vocational program. Our students are enrolled in a dual enrollment program at the Mount that happens to be, as an example, vet tech or, or early childhood, just as a helpful example. So that's also an ongoing conversation with the Mount, and they're very interested in that conversation. Anyway, a couple of things are on the burner relative to students that are not.
So I did have a question.
I'm changed.
Actually relative to. So just to clarify on the funding page.
Yes.
Where it says curriculum, special education administrators, can we clarify? It says $192,000 under initiative one. Just because I know other people are reading this, can we clarify like what that funding is? I know it goes back to last year. That's why I wanted to clarify that.
It does. You have some additional special education positions, special education, I don't want to call it the wrong thing.
Assistant, assistant special education director and assessment coordinator.
Assessment coordinator, thank you. And then as well, we were able to continue some instructional oversight and administration in the curriculum department as well as math, the math coach.
I just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying if that wasn't just like one position.
No, 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 sorry.
That would be more than for you.
Other questions for?
I feel your pain, Larry.
The superintendent?
Just a, a very quick comment about what Student Opportunity Act has done for us and is going to continue to do for us. School districts have grants all the time, right? We talk about grants all the time. Grants rarely are indefinite. They are almost always time-bound by a year, two years, three years. Esser is a good example. When you have grants like that, you do great things, right? Oh, big money. All of a sudden it shows up in the school district and we can buy something that is important to the schools. But you can't continue it. And that's why you can rarely hire staff on a grant because that funding runs out. SOA is not a grant. It's not time-bound. It doesn't stop next year. It's added to the base budget, the chapter 70 base budget for the town, and continues indefinitely until our lawmakers make any changes. But for now, is expected to continue. And so what that's given the district the ability, the ability to do in FY '23 and FY '24 is add those full-time positions. I don't remember all the ones that you rattled off, but there were a couple of elementary literacy teachers and a math coach this year in addition to, I think, a couple of others. Next year, the additions that are coming are special education specific. So two additional special education teachers that again, Student Opportunity Act has given us the ability to do, where we might not have been able to if this additional funding that is expected to be perpetual hadn't arrived. And so this is good news. I, I am glad that we've moved some things. You've heard it in, if you've been watching other school committee meetings, you've heard that we've moved more of these extra educational experiences that students can have onto some of those grants, Murdock, Robinson, Broadhurst, things like that, which has allowed our operating budget to pay for the things that matter. For salaries, operational expenses, the materials needed to run a school. And so this is, this is a good use, well, it's good for our town to have this fund, these funds as well, and it's a great use for us as we're going into FY '24. So I'm thrilled for this presentation. I didn't know some of the things that were in here, and this was super helpful. Okay, that is Student Opportunity Act. So that brings us to old business. I don't think we have any. All right. That brings us to future agenda items. I'm going to ask that, based on some of the things we've heard tonight, I think the, the school committee would benefit from a presentation on special education. The, we've heard a lot tonight and prior to tonight, and it would be good to get an update on where we've been, where we're going, difficulties, pinch points, what the issues are, and the fact that we're investing in FY '24, and I hear about the ways that those investments are going to go towards mitigating some of the issues. We also have Monty Tech and district survey results.
Who did, does that remember who put Monty Tech?
I did.
Can you remind me what that?
Yeah, what we, what we've done in the past was we've invited the Monty Tech graduates and seniors to one of our meetings and congratulated them, the Winchit, the Winchit and Monty Tech graduates. We invited them to a meeting here and we give them an attaboy and that kind of stuff.
Oh.
As to what they are and their product information.
I think, I think Justin Monten could probably scope that up for us.
So we like that one? Leave that one on there?
Yeah, leave it on there because I'm, I'm not sure.
So to be specific, it's to invite the heavy graduates from Monty Tech to one of our school committee. The Winchit residents.
To congratulate them.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I can sort of follow on that. I know, and I've been told, or have been told, that this is supposed to happen at tri-board meetings, but I haven't seen her at any of the tri-board meetings that I've been to, and that's a presentation on what's going on at Monty Tech from our Monty Tech representative. And I would suggest tentatively putting her on our agenda. And if she doesn't show up at the next tri-board meeting, insisting that she come before this committee and give us a report on what, what she's been doing and what the Monty Tech school committee has been doing.
Would you like to say her name?
What's that?
Can you say her name? You keep saying her.
I can't remember.
Tamara?
Pardon me, Karen. I forgot.
Tamara, I'm sorry. But you just keep saying her. I'm sorry.
Well, if I don't know her name.
It's Tamara.
Okay.
Thank you. Tamara Sherrill, pass the line.
Oh.
Tamara Sherrill, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but you just keep saying.
Specifically trying to.
Well, no, I'm saying if she nodded the next tri-board meeting to invite her to one of our meetings, just to put her on there tentatively for a future school committee meeting. Next in our topic.
And we also have district survey results. That is a update from Jonathan.
Can you?
Yeah. He essentially knows I need to work in the.
So we do a cert, an annual survey. Goes out, a survey that goes out to families, a survey that goes out to students, a survey that goes out to staff. It's wide-ranging, so I think, great raises, is there a specific topic relative to that survey? So we compare that down a little bit.
Well, I mean, what, other people may have other things, but what I was specifically interested in is the feeling of the students in terms of their comfort level in the schools, how they feel they're being treated by other students and staff, general.
School climate.
Acceptance. Bullying, that sort of thing.
Good.
Do they, do they get that? Like, do you have the school climate area on there?
We would, we would ask.
That's a whole thing. Yeah.
Other future agenda items?
Can I ask a question, a clarifying question? So you asked for a presentation on SPED, but you made it very specific, well, very broad. So my question, if we're going to do a presentation on, first of all, if we're going to do a presentation on SPED, what are we, what are you looking to get at? I know you said like where we're going, what we're doing, what are we, but that was kind of far.
Yeah, apologies. Didn't mean to be. The desire is to hear where we are as a district with special education, with our current resources. And then I want to hear what the expectation is in future fiscal years when there will be two additional teachers and how possibly some of the issues that have been mentioned tonight will be mitigated and addressed in the future.
What was responsibilities, expectations, projections?
Yes, all those things.
Can you say that again?
What was responsibilities, expectations and projections? Also, I think perhaps can you measure the success or satisfaction also based on some of the comments tonight too? Is that appropriate?
As in administering a survey of the families to?
Or, yeah, whatever, how, whatever way we can do that. I think it does fall into, I mean, any survey you can kind of mold questions to fit that category, especially for the four areas I mentioned, but I just didn't know if I need to be more specific.
You might want to do a special ed-specific questionnaire here if you're trying to.
That's what he's asking for.
Right. But I'm, I'm saying if you're trying to tie it into the survey that's already ongoing.
Doesn't, doesn't DESI do one?
DESI does it every three years.
Like a teacher evaluation or something, or just an overall evaluation.
They could use that as a model.
I think that's, that's enough.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
We can get new specifics of that. We're not going to get to that all tonight.
How many kids got turned down?
Other future agenda items?
Can I, am I allowed to say anything? Probably not, right?
Sorry.
Okay.
Anyone, please feel free to reach out. We can absolutely talk outside of here.
I just think you guys should also make sure if you're going to send, I know I'm not allowed. I'm going to say it anyway. You can shoot me later. But someone, someone should include the number of complaints that are filed on this district in case you're not aware. I know you're supposed to be aware. I'm confident maybe you are aware, but that would be a good thing to ask.
So.
Because I don't, I'm not, yeah.
Ms. Kenny, thank you.
You're welcome, Ryan.
Okay, Karen, I'm going to ask for only future agenda items to have any future agenda items.
That's kind of where it's going. So one of the future agenda items was to, to add to your presentation on SPED, was to add to that how many complaints we have against the district, how many lawsuits, where we are with the PQA, which I can pull up, I mean, we can pull that down from DESI too. But we can also get, I mean, you, every time a complaint is filed, I would personally, even before you present that, I personally would like you to send us, the school committee members.
Just the numbers.
Well, I mean, you can send us all the reports too. We are entitled to that. I spoke with DESI already about that. So you can send us those reports. And I, I think we, I mean, obviously you cannot, we couldn't present those. You can present the numbers at any thing. But I actually spoke with DESI about that once, saying, I mean, I want to talk about this. So I, I think we need to include that. As far as other future agenda items, I think that, I know that you wanted to give attaboy for the Mount Tech people, but you know, I know that you guys are doing prom and we're not doing like the, I know you guys aren't doing that break party.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So when is, I know you mentioned Promenade.
Promenade is May 19th.
Three thirty.
Three thirty.
We leave at four.
Is it right at Murdock?
Yep. In the gym.
May fourth, six p.m.?
No, no, I have it written down.
Our school committee meeting, the next one, is May fourth.
And the eighteenth.
And your prom is?
And then the eighteenth.
The nineteenth.
And the nineteenth. So school party is the eighteenth.
Nineteenth.
Eighteenth and then prom.
So it's not, it's not on the day.
All right. I just wanted to, just be, ultimately plan some way to embarrass them all at Promenade. As a future, as a, a planning for the future agenda item, making a plan to be at Promenade. I know that wouldn't technically be on the agenda.
Other future agenda items?
I'm trying to give you something.
One more.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I think we've got to do a super tense evaluation at some point.
Yes, we do.
That's it.
Okay. A quick note that the, we are closing member comments, closing comments by the school committee members in a moment. We do have an executive session on the agenda for this evening. However, the, yes, Larry, I was going to make the motion. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion on article 13 that we move to table executive session until May 4th, 2023.
We have a motion to table executive session to May 4th. Do we have a second?
Well, second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second to table item number 13 to May 4th. Any discussion?
Just wondering, I, I mean, I realize it's getting late, but beyond the inconvenience of staying late, what's the, the purpose of delaying it? I just, I just have a sense that it's something that I think we need to.
Not related to this. We, the items that we could have spoken about in executive session are no longer present, no longer available for us to discuss.
Oh, okay.
All right. So there's no item to discuss in executive session.
I got you.
Are we discussing? We have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry.
Yes?
I am not available until I have a work conference. So I would hate to not be available for, would I be able to call in to be able to the executive session? Because I don't want to.
Can we hear that?
Even if I have to miss the actual school committee meeting, like, could you guys dial me in?
Although for the purpose of tonight, we ask Larry to change his motion to tabling the.
Tabling?
Tabling the agenda item to an upcoming, an upcoming meeting, which will be determined before the next agenda.
Okay. I'd like to rescind my first one.
All right.
I have the second one. I'd like to move to table our executive session until a more updated meeting is available to us.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay, Alicia?
Uh, yeah.
Great. Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And Chair goes aye. And that brings us.
And literacy, I mean, from Larry.
Move closing.
To closing member comments and we'll start with Karen.
So a few things. First of all, I really, really, really want to thank you all for being here tonight, for making your voices heard, for bringing everything to the attention, not just on Facebook, but here to the committee because not everybody's on Facebook. I think that if, speaking as somebody who was where you are sitting now, it's always important to make sure that you were heard. And as Larry said, democracy is messy and it's always important to make sure that we keep it, we keep it going. I think that you were heard. I think that you need to keep everybody honest and I think that's important. And I will keep listening to you and you can keep emailing me. Mike, I have to make sure you have my writing notes. I don't know why yours always bounced back.
I don't know.
Maybe, maybe they put a spam blocker on you.
I don't know. Again, I need, mine bounced back too. But you got mine, right?
I want to, I want to thank you all and I want to say that, you know, not just you guys, but I know there were a lot of people that couldn't attend tonight. So thank you for not only being here, but sitting in a hot sweaty room and a smaller room and affected and letting us all know how you feel. Don't, don't be disheartened by the fact that you may not have gotten the answers that you wanted tonight. You, you know, people will reach out to you and get your answers. I have faith. And thank you. And Angelina, I expect you to get way more scholarship money before the next meeting, next week.
From you.
No, I have no money. Ronan took it all.
Yeah. Again, thank you all for coming tonight and thank you for your passion and your love for your children. It's great. And I just want to congratulate the students with staff.
Thank you.
The student council kids, they also got one for National Art Society. And the one that was kind of close to my heart too, it's nice to hear that the special ed Olympics, the Special Olympics are coming back to Murdoch.
Yeah.
That's a big honor. I think it's, it's awesome. Says a lot about our community and our students and our athletes. So that's a great thing. And that's it for me. Yes, I'm going to echo to some extent what Karen and Larry have said in thanking you all for coming tonight. I'm glad that you came. I'm glad that you expressed your concerns. But I have to say that I would love to see this many people at all our school committee meetings. And I know it's easy to get excited when things are going wrong and when you're upset. I would love to see people come before the school committee sometime when things are going well, their kids are doing exceptional and tell us what we're doing right sometimes as well as just what we're doing wrong. I would love to see that. I apologize to you if I didn't get back to your email. I got a number of emails regarding Ms. Bazina and I replied to several of them, so.
It was last year.
If I missed, oh, okay. Well, if I missed you, I apologize. But I just want to, you know, let everybody know, if you have something you want to bring before the committee, you don't necessarily have to wait until a school committee meeting because our emails are there. It may take some time to get back to you because people, generally speaking, will get back to you. Another thing I'd like to bring forward is the district reorganization. I really wish there was another, something else we could call that because it's not reorganization for reorganization sake. The whole impetus behind it is the expansion of the early literacy program and bringing younger kids in to start them earlier. And I can't say it would necessarily help some of the students whose difficulties were outlined here tonight. The whole purpose of that is to give the kids the head start that they may not be getting now. And I think, I think it's important. I mean, I, whether you didn't get a bid on a playground or something else that, that you needed right away to get the program going, I, you know, I would need for there to be a zombie apocalypse before I would say pull back and don't get this thing going. I'd like to see this start just as soon as we could, we can, quite frankly. I think it's too important to delay. I think it's too important for the kids and I think it's too important for the community. But again, thank you all for coming tonight. That's all I have right now.
In light of everyone, ignorance is not bliss, so I appreciate all of the information and people stepping forward and giving us information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Get it together and do it.
Appreciation to everyone that came out, whether you were able to address the committee or not. Alicia said it very well, we need the information and so we're, we're glad to have it. I will reiterate what I've, I've shared with some of you sent in the email communications and phone communications that have happened over the last few weeks. And that is that receiving this information in a timely manner and ways in which we can act on it. You know, we, we don't have the ability legally to respond to things on social media. That is an open forum. That would be in conflict of our state's open meeting laws and therefore we, we won't and we can't. And the other boards also should not and do not. And so in places like this, this is an open meeting. This is where we can hear these things out loud and we can communicate with you individually. So you have representation. That's why we get elected to do this. We are your representatives and so you should feel comfortable emailing us and getting in touch with us when you share those concerns. And you can call on phones at bay.
Big one is in, if you're wondering.
We've heard a lot of good things tonight. I will point out a couple of dates that are coming up. Monday is the townwide election. So please, please get out and vote for the folks that are running for the school committee, but also the folks that are running for other boards in town. May 4th is our next school committee meeting. That is really quick. That is a week from tonight. And so we don't know which ones of these future agenda items will be on that meeting yet, but we know that they are coming up. Also, there's an important date on May 15th. That is the city, the town's meeting. That meeting, in addition to all the important things that are on that agenda on that warrant, one of the items is the funding that is related to our ability to have more audio visual interaction with our school committee meetings and other meetings for that matter in the second floor auditorium. And so if you feel strongly about that, I encourage you to attend the meeting and hear, have your voice heard.
Then only in the second floor, I have a fire, I'm sorry.
Appreciate everyone's attendance tonight. Apologies for keeping you late. Apologies for the small room and apologies for the heat because I am dying and I think others are as well. Thank you. Happy to take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Somebody push that button.